May we please stand for the invocation provided by the elder Patricia Wallace followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father of us all, we come and ask for your divine presence. We ask that you come our spirits in our hearts, make us as one. Allow us to conduct the business of this city. God, we thank you for another opportunity to be among the living in a time of so much uncertainty. That we will unite instead of divide, that we will be one instead of many. Father, we ask that you allow justice and integrity to stand forth. We ask that you allow truth to come forth and that you empower those who need to be empowered to do their work with the authority of which they have earned. We ask that you bless the citizens of Pahokee that they will be busy about their community and restoration. We ask that you protect law enforcement as they be faithful to their oath. And God guide us as leaders in this community to do your will and not ours. We ask your blessings on everything. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you all so much for coming out to our town hall meeting. We have been promising to provide town halls on a regular basis to inform you of updates that's happening in our community. And to give you an opportunity to make comments of any concerns you may have and for us to listen. So we won't be doing all the talking or much of the talking, but this is actually for our community. I'm a little surprised with the number however it's being live streamed. So the majority of the community will be able to witness what we're doing here today. The format would basically, I'll be providing an update on community activities. We're going to have our city attorney, Brennan Ed Norris, week, give us an update on our litigations and anything pertaining to our law enforcement. Next then, we'll have our interim city manager, Rodney Lucas, provide updates and information that he would like to share with the community as a whole. I mentioned those two first. This meeting is not about neither. It's more than likely that both may soon or end up terminated at some point. It's up really to the majority, but everything has to be done in a decent, orderly, and lawful manner. And that's all we're requesting. And I think that's all, all of our citizens are requesting. And next we'll have our city commissioners, those that are present. Each commissioner was invited. This is a mayor town hall meeting. It's not an official meeting where we're going to be voting on any action. But each commissioner was invited to participate. So they too would be able to make comments and answer some of your questions that you may have of our commission as a whole. So I'm again now, again, thank you for coming out. We appreciate everything that you're doing to assist this community. We have some grassroots organizations that behind the scene have been working very hard to make sure that this city is ran and adjusted equal manner. So I'm going to begin with just a few updates. I know there have been some criticism that the city of Pahokee haven't done very much in the last X number of years. I'm just sharing a few of the highlights of the last six years that we have done in this city. First, I start with demolition. We demolished the old city hall. That's a structure that was destroyed during a hurricane for many years. It's been an eyesore. We was able to receive an award of $365,000 to demolish that. I'm currently in possession of a letter of intent from a major, major investor that is willing and able and wanting to build a brand hotel and a luxury resort in that same location. I say I have a letter of intent, it is actually signed. Whether that going to go forward or not, I'm not sure. Preferably it may, hopefully it will. But their intent is to build, but with all the negative publicity and talk around our community, it will and possibly will hinder that process. So I'm asking the public, you know, support the community, support your city. I'm not saying you can't speak up or you shouldn't speak up, but a lot of the negative comments does affect business development in our city. Then we had the demolition of the old house pillar. We was awarded $300,000 to tear down that old structure. It was sold to a private developer for affordable housing. We have two current development in the works. That old house pillar site and the old Eastlake site. We're talking about over 200 plus rental and affordable living facilities. And not everybody is a favor of that, especially because it say renters for renter development. But everybody can't afford a home. Everybody don't want a home. Our goal as a city as a whole is homeownership. And that's what we are continuing to work towards. But we need all types of housing development in Pahokee. We haven't had a major housing development in Pahokee in a decade. So I'm just surprised when there are individuals that is actually fighting against those development. The one at the house pillar, the zoning has been approved, but they still have to submit their site plan. We still have to do permitting and a lot of other things before that can become a reality. And the reason I'm mentioning that is there still could be a drawback to that if the city itself don't totally cooperate with these individuals in moving forward. And lastly, the next major demolition was the old water plant. That can be used for a garage or some other economic development. Next we have renovation. You sitting here in a gym that was renovated mainly by Palm Beach County to a tune of $1.9 million. This gym site either not being used since 2009. This is for our youth. This is for our young adults. This is for everyone. It's not only just going to be a sports facility, but you can rent it for parties and other events because that was part of the county stipulation that we open this gym up not only for city program but for all programs in our community. And we'll be doing that. Infrastructure improvement, just for the, just during the past six years. And I know people talk about our roads and streets, but I need to inform you that 60% plus have been renovated, have been resurfaced since six years, since six years ago. And that's major for a small community. I don't know if you know Bacon Point Road was resurfaced. East Main Street was resurfaced. I mean, we got numerous of road. Currently just across the street here, Barfield Highway, $4.3 million to resurface that road. Another road right across the street, East Main Street, $1.3 million to resurface. We have received $900,000 to do McClure Road. So your city commission is working hard to improve this condition of our, our city. In addition to that, $750,000 was spent on Glade Citizen Village just recently in 2020. The Marina just recently, $1.2 million. And all of this is on our website. All of this is public record. I don't know if any other city, when they receive money, that they share with the community. And certainly we get criticism for it. You may look at that Barfield Highway and say, why would you spend 4.3 million? Well, that's what it costs to total reconstruct that road. Well, why don't you take half of it and put over here? Most grants are grant specific, so when we apply, when we apply for a grant, we can only use it for that particular project. Well, you are stealing money. Money is always looked at. It's always monitored. It's always reviewed by the state. Every receipt that we take in and every expenditure that we do have to go to the state for review. We did $550,000 project at Commissioner Park. New playground equipment, new basketball court, new tennis court, and on and on and on. We spent $750,000 or will be spending a total of $750,000 in Eastlake Village for stormwater improvement. in Eastlake Village for stormwater improvement and canal cleanout. That's in our community. That's for the city of Pahokee. In the past, when money was brought in, 95% of it was earmarked to the Marina. One of the things that, that was the reason for one of the things because the state does own the Marina, and it's more likely that we can get funding for projects. But we went above and beyond that. No other city that I know of in the last five years have successfully secured approximately $15 million for this community. And it don't go that far, but it's making a big difference in our infrastructure and creating and attracting new businesses as they come in. We have an $800,000 state-of-the-art football field right outside this building. That's for our children. That's for our children, and that are some of the things that we're doing. We erected a new entrance sign, a beautiful entrance sign on Bacon Point Road. I remember when I was in college, 40 years ago, and I kept asking for that sign. So just recently, in the last five years, we have that beautiful sign, and it's seen everywhere. You know, I try to post it as much as I can. That may seem like a small gesture, but when you're proud of your city, when you coming back from college and you hit that entrance into Pahokee, it makes you feel proud. It certainly made me feel proud. For transparency, we have started our live streaming. We did that about six years ago. Every single commission meeting is live. That give you an opportunity, if you can't come out to view the meeting personally, which I always encourage, you have the opportunity to view those meetings live via video on YouTube Live TV. And if you miss them, you can always go back to any individual meeting. So these are just a few, just a handful of things that we're doing. I think most of you all know that Palm Beach County invested $5 million recently in Pahokee for the non-congregate living facility. That mean anyone who contract COVID-19 and still are having to go back home and possibly expose your family, you can say at that facility to the virus secede your body and you won't be at risk of infecting anyone. And just to mention COVID-19, I'm glad everyone is following protocol or wearing your mask. That virus is still there. It's serious. A lot of our residents are dying of that. So please, please protect yourself and be safe in this community. At this time, I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney. Just to give a brief overview, some litigations, you can't share all the information. We have what you call shade meeting. That mean it's a meeting where it's a lawsuit pending or some type of litigation. The commission meet to discuss it, but you don't wanna share all of your strategy. But after the lawsuit has been complete, then you'll be able to receive the minutes of that meeting. And me, I'm just stealing a little of her thunder because I don't think she would mention that. The lawsuit with the Perez, the one that we were sued for $12,000 attorney fee. We won that case. Thanks to our attorney for her hard work in that. There, there was a big effort to cut her off of that, to get her away from that, so that the chances are the other party would prevail. So I'm just glad to announce that. So without further ado, we'll have our attorney just give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's also good to hear the mayor talk about some of the things that the city has done. I can tell you, between these two individuals sitting on my right, Commissioner Mervin, former vice mayor, and, and the mayor, nobody works harder. They work hard for this city at times you don't see doing things you don't see them doing, but they're out there working hard for you all. And, and I know they spent a whole lot of time doing it. And you're fortunate to have a mayor who is at a point in his life where he's retired and he devotes 100% of his time, I can tell you that, to the city of Pahokee. Now, in terms of litigation matters and what is going on, without, well, let me give you a general overview of how we got here because I'm sure many of you are wondering, you know, what is going on with the city of Pahokee? And you should. When I first came as a city attorney in 2019, it was well over two years ago, and I was appointed officially. I was first appointed as an interim and had that position for about six months. And then there was a search that went out, and then I was appointed as, after a full search had been done and other people applied and we all interviewed. I was appointed as the permanent city attorney in November of 2019. And at that time, and since that time, there was a, there were two pending cases that were going on, well, one in particular that was going on at that time. And that was regarding one of the commissioners, Ms. Sarah Perez's husband, and a piece of property that is hotly contested on Main Street. And, and this, and we've had several hearings. We tried at some point to settle it. It wouldn't settle. And it was coming up to a hearing that was supposed to be held on July the 26th. So on or about the, the beginning of July, somewhere around the beginning of July, Commissioner Perez made a motion to terminate my contract. And the other commissioner seemed a little confused about what she was doing. They didn't know what was going on. So of course, I called them all after the meeting to ask what's going on and, you know, is there some reason, something I don't know? Everybody said, you're doing a great job. Everything is fine. So on July 13th, Commissioner Regina Boland then vote, moves to terminate my contract. Now, keep in mind, we're moving up to a hearing date for two cases that was supposed to be held on the 26th of July. One was involving attorney's fees for Sarah Perez, which the mayor just talked about was one by the city. And the other one was involving the Main Street property, which a summary judgment motion was set for that day. So on July the 13th, Commissioner Boland brings up the motion. And because there was a rules of procedure that the city had passed, there, the, it couldn't go forward that night to a vote because of the rules of procedure where you have to bring it up, the meeting prior to the meeting that you vote on it. So we move along to, and we're getting closer to this hearing date on the, on the 26th. On July the 13th, the commission has a special meeting that it has, and it votes to terminate the contract. Okay, so even though you're supposed to bring it up as a future agenda item under the rules, which Ms. Perez had moved to abolish the rules, and then right now, it's on the second reading that will be coming up at some point in the future. But even though that had been done, I accepted that. I said, okay, we'll go ahead and count that, as the mayor had announced at that meeting, as the termination of my contract on that night. And the city's followed up with a letter according to the contract. My contract, by the way, requires a 90-day notice provision. So that July 13th meeting was supposed to be the 90 days, start the 90 days for the notice according to my contract that was passed by resolution appropriately. Well, the, it seemed that that wasn't good enough. So just a few days later, the commission, they tried to set this secret meeting basically outside and it's undone in a parking lot with no notice. And, and you all heard about that. That was a real big deal. That was on the 23rd of, 23rd of July. So that wasn't good enough. So later, they, they, they vote to try to put Mr. Brandenburg in, but only at the time that they try to put him in with a resolution because you can only put someone in with a resolution. The mayor had already at that point, because it was a whole big deal. For those of you who attended that meeting in the commission meeting a few weeks ago, where me and Mr. Brandenburg sat, which was covered by the media and in the paper, and it was a whole big deal. The mayor realized in his good judgment that, look, we gotta put something in place where we can have some order in this city until the judge has a chance to rule on this case. Ms. Pastor Wallace, who's sitting over there, she at some point filed a lawsuit, she and several residents, because the city wasn't given a proper notice that it was supposed to give for these meetings. And the judge took the case up and he said, look, we're gonna have a hearing in the future. And we're now waiting for that hearing to take place. And the court, you know, things are moving along. So that's where that case is. We're waiting for an evidentiary hearing to take place for which anybody can log on and hear it and hear the evidence. So the problem with what Mr. Brandenburg and, and what he corrals the city commissioners to do most recently was done at a time when there was an emergency order in place, and it was done at a time where there wasn't notice that was done by the city. And Mr. Brandenburg, of course, has no legal position with the city, and therefore, he couldn't make it, he couldn't do any kind of a notice. So we have sort of a standstill standoff here, and there's documentation for everything. But one thing that you won't see, you won't see any minutes from those meetings, which is required by Florida law. You won't see the fact that there was no city clerk there at those, at two of the meetings that they had that we consider to be illegal meetings that was required by Florida law. You won't see that any public participation was taken at that hearing or those illegal meetings, which is required by Florida law. You won't see that any, you know, any of the things that you would normally see in the law. So let me just back up a second and let you all know. And I know it sounds a little like a lot of stuff, but there's a lot of stuff that's been going on and you all need to know, you know, at least briefly some of it from our part. We're not just sitting here, me and Mr. Lucas, because we think, you know, we're just trying to stay in some position. We're sitting here because we are on the side of right. We've, we followed the law. We've done the things that we were supposed to do appropriate, appropriately. We, and we're at the point now where if you all allow things to just take place in the city where there's no order, there's no guidance, commissioners are basically looking to abolish rules so you don't have any rules in place for how long you have your meetings or how you have your meetings in order, or what the American do, any of that. That's what is happening right now in this city. So it's good to see so many of you here in the room because it's, it's time to wake up. It is time to wake up. And this is not about me. It's not about Mr. Lucas. It's about the citizens of Pahokee. We, we can move on and we can have, you know, other opportunities. But for right now, for you all to engage and know what's happening, that people can't just make up and make up stuff and say something is and proceed as though it is without having rules, that's what this is about. Because if you allow it now, then anything goes. I can tell you for the last couple of years since I've been here, since 2019, there hasn't been one thing that's come out. Now, there are old things that the inspector general had made a report about from before I got here, but there was not one thing, and I'm proud of it, that had come out where you can say, I didn't review something, I didn't see something, I didn't watch something, I didn't, you know, do something, I threw away something. Nothing. This, this city have been on quiet in terms of its legal obligations. So I'm content that we have done as a firm everything that we were supposed to do, and then some. And I'm also content with the fact that I feel that we were able to move the city along. Now, I'm not gonna hold up your meeting, mayor, but I do wanna say this. It's time to wake up. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. Come to meetings, see what's going on, watch what people are doing, don't listen to what people say. You can, all of these things are public. You can listen to the hearings. You can get the Zoom links. You can come to the meetings. You can write letters. You can speak at every meeting. You have that right. And unless you basically take control and accept the fact that, you know, you are responsible for who you elect, you know, you're gonna see this city go in a fast downward spiral. So I invite you all to engage, engage yourselves and get involved in this community. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, attorney. Now, we're here from our interim city manager, Rodney Lucas, to give some comments and a few words.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome, citizens of Pahokee. Glad you guys came out. I've been here for a short period of time. I came here officially May 11th, interviewed, was voted 5-0 as the next interim city manager with a start date of June 14th. From that point until August 11th, that's 58 days, and a lot has happened. I came here based on the great potential of what Pahokee brings and has. I, I try not to shape any opinion, if you will. I listened to a lot of people, a lot of people in my ear saying how corrupt Pahokee has become. People telling me that, that all staff has to go. People telling me that we got a clean house. So I, I look back on my 58 days, and a lot has been accomplished. When I got here, there was issues with blue algae. It's safe to say that we gave a key away to South Florida Water Management on Wednesday, April 11th, and there was no algae. So I'm glad of all the success that was done there by many partners. It, it just wasn't Pahokee or South Florida Water Management. It was FDEP. It was citizens. It was staff. It's a team effort. I thought I could come here and build things based on team effort. That's commission as well as staff. One of the things that I was told was I came into investigations. So I had investigations for IG for travel for Mr. Williamson. I was told about misspending of $2.1 million for Marina and campground. I was told about Mr. Lambert had a contract with the city and the state. I, I was told of audits. So we had audit findings from 2017-18, state legislator 11 findings. We're currently under IG procurement audit. We're under a F fiscal year 2020 audit through our hired auditors through HCT. It just goes on. But let's start with the first investigation, the travel and Mr. Williamson. Well, I was told to investigate, why hasn't prosecution happened? Well, word came back from the state through official letterhead and memo that even though some things were misappropriated, there was no evidence. Case closed. Miss, misspending of $2.1 million for the Marina and campground. I was told that there, there was all kind of things going on wrong with that. But we have successfully turned in the, to the DEO the grant submitted from back in 2018 and that we did all things appropriately and we, we cleared that grant for the 2.1, which was obviously a two-prong submitted. We had $990,000 and like 1.3 million. Also, I was told of the restaurant and then the Marina being managed by Mr. Lambert. After researching that and reaching out to Brad Richardson with the state and the governor's office, I was told that the city and the state has rejected Mr. Lambert's contract. So that, that itself had, had been resolved as well. Then what we have currently right now pending is we're in discussions on several things economic development-wise. So we have Project X, which is basically So we have Project X, which is basically nine acres, um, of city-owned property out of 34.55 acres. Uh, it's a confidentiality thing, but we're looking at doing a public-private partnership, uh, and, and looking at developing our first industrial park. Then there's Project Y, which is, uh, potentially the Old Firehouse, which is our public, uh, works department over there. There's a, uh, a lady out of Miami that wants to come here and put twin hotel towers there. So, um, also, um, there was things about, we mis- misappropriated or sold the old hospital, end up being for like $196,000, a little under 200,000, but it was going for $4 million. So this week, we're supposed to have, the city's supposed to have a pre-development meeting with, uh, the owners of, of this 60-unit development for townhomes that'll be, uh, two-bedroom and three-bedroom, uh, homes, uh, for residents of Pahokee. So as we work out, uh, the development plan, the site plan, go before this, the zoning, planning, and we're planning and zoning committee to get that approved and then get permits issued, you'll see all these things beginning to come out the ground in a positive manner. Then there's Project Z, in which we're in the process of looking at three to four, uh, infield housing projects for single-family, which will have a significant raising of our, our property value. Uh, speaking of property value, our milage rate, our value of our homes increased $1 million from last year. So it's been a great thing with the milage. And then we come to our budget cycle, uh, for this year. There's been some back and forth on, on things, trying to get, um, a resolution done, but eventually we do have to have a final resolution. We were able to certify, um, our milage rate at, at 6.5419 and a rollback rate of 6.09. So we were able to do that and avoid being charged for printing and all those things, even though we had four task of, of, of trying to get the resolution passed. Also, um, we're going through, um, some things with the Florida Department Environmental Protection Agency for, um, the Marina. The Marina still needs a lot of work. We're in the process of identifying what those costs will be. So the Marina's basically broken down into, uh, two sites. So you have, uh, docks A, B, C, then you have D, E, F. Well, I guess many hurricanes ago in '05, we had extensive damage to the right side in D, E, and F. So we're, we're trying to get assessment of what's that cost to, to redevelop that. Then also, we have, um, issues with, uh, contractually, we don't own the, um, the rights to the Marina. So the state owns it, we just have a fiduciary responsibility to govern processes and, and the ownership of, uh, the Marina. So, uh, in a nutshell, boats can't permanently stay there. We have to rotate every six months. So we had to, uh, call liver boars. So, um, we had to administer correcting things that had been going on for years. You know, this, this is all under a short period of time that took many years to get there, but came upon our shoulders a- as the commissioners and, and the legal team to help correct these things. And we were able to correct those things and, and, and begin to move the city forward out of, um, all these scrutinies that are going on. But we had a critical point where the city is like divided. You have a tale of two cities here. You know, sitting back and, and just watching, you have a white version of what's going on with the city, then you got this black version of what's going on with the city. So, so when I, when I sit here and I, I think about reset button, we need to hit the reset button. Boland, Gonzalez, and Perez can't continuously bully the other two. You can't have the sheriff department chiming in saying that one side's right when they tell me they're being neutral. All these things have to be addressed. I may not be the person they select, but I'm gonna tell you the truth. Whether you wanna hear it or not, I've listened to a whole lot of you. I said at your homes, I, I've, I, I've listened, I took a whole lot of patience and understanding, how have we gotten to where Pahokee is today? We're on the eve of 100 years. I don't know how you guys gonna make it. I, 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 I'm just being honest. I never been interfered with so much in my whole career. It just hurts.
Thank you, uh, interim city manager. Just wanna just highlight one or two things that each of these individuals said. The first, uh, for our city attorney, uh, I think she mentioned that she has a 90-day, uh, advance notice of termination of her contract. Uh, I don't think she mentioned, she may have or may not, that Mr. Brandonberg is refusing to pay the 90 days. She probably could have been gone a while back, but they don't even wanna do that. And that's something she would have to agree on upon that, but I don't think she would even have fought that or tried to fight it. Imagine you working and have a contract. That would be a breach of a contract. That would cause us to be sued. And some folks don't care, don't mind doing that. Uh, another thing that the city manager mentioned, we, we talked just a little about, uh, JP DT Holand. That's the young men, the NFL players who has the sublease waiting on the agreement from the governor and the board of trustees. They have been pressured to work with Mr. Lambert, to work an agreement with him and not to bid on the Marina contract or the campground contract. That belongs to Mr. Lambert. That's a story. How can a commissioner threaten a potential investor of doing that? These young men are also, if you saw some of their posting, I posted on my Facebook page of their homes around the community, these are some of the same investors who have agreed to build houses for our citizen in our community. Even if you own a lot, an individual lot, they can assist with financing for that and build your home that will meet your financial need, that will be within financial range, that you can build your own home on your own property. And lastly, I'm gonna just go back to a thing, another thing Mr. Lucas say, he has been pressured by commissioner who has sworn an oath that they wouldn't interfere with the day-to-day operation to terminate staff. You heard it here, I'm just echoing it, I'm hyphenating it, that all of our apartment heads are potentially target for dismissal and most of the staff. Those are people that may be part of your family. If they're not, they have a family that they need to feed. Uh, city manager should come in, assure, he should assess the staff performance. And if they ain't performing, he put up a performance plan. If they don't perform then, they should be terminated. But to come in with the attitude that we gonna clean house? No, you don't do that. That's inappropriate, that's unacceptable, and we shouldn't stand for that. At, at this time, I would ask and allow our city commissioner, Claire Mervin, to make comments and say a few words. After she make her comments, we're gonna open it up to the floor. We got some great folks in here that have some concern and I hope you're, uh, uh, brave enough to get up in front of that mic and least air your concerns. We have Mr. Williams, uh, Richard Williams here. We all celebrities in here, but I just wanna mention that he came a, a little ways just to be with us because he is also concerned about Pahokee. And he've also looked at property to invest, not to make a dollar, but to try to put back in a community like our community that would help our resident to prosper. Commissioner?
Good evening, citizens of Pahokee. Uh, I am so happy to see, uh, the members you're here tonight. They already gave you all the updates, uh, of our city, but I would just like to say, um, in 2016, I ran for a city commissioner, uh, to be a city commissioner. I, I ran not for a title. I ran to serve the people of Pahokee. And one thing that I always said in my statement when I ran, if you come to me with something and ask me something, I was, if I don't get the answer, I will surely get the answer and bring it to you. But one thing that I promised, and I made a promise, that I would be honest and I would be true, 'cause that's who I am and that's what I stand upon. I always told citizens, you know where I live, 357 Kissimmee Avenue. And you could always knock on my door, you could always come to me in the grocery store, it, it doesn't matter, and I will give you, if you ask me something, give you the answer to that or find the answer for it. I ran to serve the city of Pahokee 'cause I saw that there was a need and I just, and I prayed about it. And I don't just talk this, I live this, I live this. My husband there would tell you not a day till he probably get tired of me talking about the city of Pahokee. 'Cause I wake up in the morning with it at 7 o'clock, my phone starts to ringing. But I am here for each one of you here in this city. I'm not about color, 'cause I'm, I'm for white, black, Hispanic, whomever. I am for the city of Pahokee. And whatever concerns you, it concerns me, 'cause I live, I live within this city. So my job i- is to fight for the people of Pahokee. When I'm out of town, when I'm in lettuce tree, I'm fighting for the people of Pahokee. But I just wanna say, and so, 'cause I'm here to hear from what you have to say unto us or what we can do better. You might not like every decision that we make, but my decision is to be the betterment of the city of Pahokee. That's my decision. And if it's something that you see, something that you hear, Commissioner Mervin, can you tell me why that choice was made? Believe me, you could come to me, you could come to me, you could talk to me and I will talk to you. But I am here to hear for what you have to say unto us, but we are here to serve you. That's what we are here for. I appreciate everyone here that elected us to be at your, at your, at your head and to be your servant, but we are your servant. We are here to serve you. And that's my whole heart, that's my dream, that's my whole w- will and vision is to serve the people of Pahokee. So I am here to hear what you have to say to us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Mervin. At this time, we're gonna open the floor for anyone in the audience who would wish to address the commission and staff. Uh, it can be a comment, it can be a question, the floor is open for comments. And if you can work yourself over to the, uh, pole and with the mic to be able to ask
This is merely for demonstrative purposes, because you all know what this stands for. This stands for a fan that has been a longtime fan, that at certain time, his team gets to point to where their performance is so embarrassing that he doesn't wanna be known as a team or a fan member. That's where I stand this evening. I voted for every commissioner that serves now, with the exception of Mr. Gonzalez. I voted for Mervin when she ran, Rababs, Repsus Perez, and Bolden. I voted for each and every one of them, because I lived through all-white commission, I lived through all-black commission, and I felt that a commission needs to look like and be reflective of its community, its black, white, and Hispanic. And I believe that diversity has a way of making things even, when those persons act in a right way. I took the time, I was approached by somebody, and they said, "Why don't you get the commissioner together and just talk to them?" And I did that. I talked personally to each and every commissioner. And when we met privately, as a private citizen, there was one agenda. What can we do to make Pahokee one? Because it seems to me there's gonna be, there's getting to be a division. And so our mantra became, "One Pahokee." And when we talked, the only thing we discussed is, as a city commissioner, what do you think the people ought to be able to expect from you? And they gave answers like professionalism, ethics, honesty, openness, respect, no hidden agendas, and things of that nature. And then I said, "Well, what do you all expect from the citizens? We expect the citizens to take pride in their property, in their city, and to help one another? Your neighbor's grass is high, yours is cut? Maybe they don't have a lawnmower that works, help them out. We expect the city to invest back, the citizens to invest back into the city." And things of that nature. But I have not seen that. And what I have seen has been so non-professional, has been so dishonest, has been so disrespectful. Now, when it comes to that respectful thing, they fire coaches and heads and leaders all the time, they replace them all the time, but it's a way to do it. As long as he's your leader, he needs that respect. And I never will be able to just swallow how they were allowed to disrespect our mayor. That was wrong. And if the commissioner don't do what everything is listed, that they said, at least do what you said you would expect to see out of a commissioner. If you the one that said you wanna openness, then be open. If you the one that said that you should expect honesty, then you be honest. And let's get this thing together. I'm still a fan, but I don't wanna wear this bag always.
Good evening. My name is Joe Freeman, 510 Walker Circle. I've been a witness to some of these last three or four meetings, and I'm like every other citizen, I'm very, very... I'm very, very upset with what's been going on. And my thing to the board is the undo. There's a lot of things been put in place by the last city manager that need to be undid. Like on the streets down in Blacktown after a game. We can't go down there and sit around, I don't hang out. But for our youth, we can't go down there and sit out for a couple hours. We pay the police department over $500,000, $800,000 a year. They can babysit, supervise, whatever it take, for people to go down there for three or four hours. The public side of the arena up there, over on the lake, you go up there, it don't be name vehicle up there. We need to undo that. My thing is to undo a couple of things that been put in place. A lot of time, we see y'all on the streets, like we talk to y'all, like you go in one ear and out the other one. Like I said, we need to be more professional up there. Y'all need to be more considerate and listen to the people in the public. Like the gentleman said earlier, y'all is a public service, even the shared department. So I think y'all can do better. And my thing is to undo a couple of things that been did. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Bernard Mervin. Y'all know me. I live at 357 Kissimmee Avenue. I've been in Pahokee all my life. And as everybody have said, I sit back and my wife, she have this city at heart. And I have, what I am, was really disappointed with a lot of my black people. They are making judgments without facts. If you're gonna say something about somebody, make sure that you have the fact. The campaign that they had ran was all about the councils stealing money. They even said that my house, the roof that I had, aluminum roof I had put on my house, that they, we stole, my wife stole the money from the city. Everything fester around a lie. When the IG report came out, it didn't say anything about the man say stole any money. And I asked the black guys who stand under the tree and over by the liquor store and all them places just running their mouth, not one of them have ever went to the city council, went to the city manager office and said, Mr. Williams or Mr. Luke, could I talk with you and find out what's going on? No. The Bible says that my, that the people would rather believe a lie than to believe the truth. And the whole race that they run was on a lie. Now, one place, they say she live in Pahokee. Then they say she live in Sioux Point. All of this stuff that people know. Juan Gonzalez, I talked with him and I asked him. He, I say, well, how did this thing come about? By Ms. Sarah having different addresses? He tell me, I did that. That's false vocation. So, but everybody talking about what the ones that been doing. But as it being said, there's many projects that being done. Everything has a process. Nothing just happened overnight. There's a process in everything we do. But people wake up. There is no more time for sleeping. There's time for people that got a coup and they coming in and taking over, cause why? The young people don't see the older people standing up for what is right. If the black people stand up for what's right, then the young people will see what we are all about. But if you don't never set up and do anything, then how we expect for the young ones that coming on? And I'm not a racist. I'm not a racist at all. But I never saw any organization come in and come in and say that they're gonna fire everybody. That's not, that's not how the system run. And it never have run anywhere. So people, we need to wake up and start and smell the coffee.
Good evening. My name is Everett McPherson and I reside at 155 North Green Star, Pahokee, Florida. And I have a few things that I'm gonna read that I've taken, took the time to research from the charter. And it makes reference to certain Florida statutes. And Florida statutes are considered Florida law. I'm just gonna read a couple of those things. Just bear with me. Statute, Florida statute 112.311, Legislative Intent and Declaration of Policy. And the title of this policy is Public Officers and Employees in Records. And it talks about people that are serving in public office. It is essential to the proper conduct and operation of government that public officials be independent and impartial and that public office not be used for private gain other than the remuneration provided by law. The public interest therefore requires that the law protect against any conflict of interest and establish standards for the conduct of elected officials and government employees in situations where conflict may exist. I'm gonna skip down, I'm not gonna read the entire policy, but number six in that same particular policy states that it is a declaration, excuse me, it is declared to be the policy of the state that public officers and employees, state and local, are agents of the people, the people, that's us. The people, that's us. And hold their position for the benefit of the public. They are bound to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state constitution to perform efficiently and faithfully their duties under the laws of the federal, state, and local governments. Such officers and employees are bound to observe in their official acts, the highest standard of ethics. Consistent with this code and advisory opinions rendered with respect hereunto, regardless of personal consideration, recognizing that promoting the public interest and maintaining the respect of the people in their government must be the foremost concern. And I stand here before you, I don't think some of our elected officials show the public any type of respect. If they had any type of respect, they'll be here to answer any questions that we may have today. And with that said, when they take office, they take an oath to serve the people. And that's their statue, Florida statue, state law, that governs the Florida, state, local, and all governments, that they're in direct violation of the law. And how can you be a commissioner? When I, when I vote for somebody, I expect for them to uphold the law to their fullest. I expect them to be law-abiding citizens. I don't expect people to come in breaking the law. And I'm sick and tired of it. And those of you that out there and those that you are there on Facebook, the same respect that they show to the public now, I hope when it's voting time, that you show them that same respect.
Thank you for the call on 1548 Singletary Avenue. And standing here as a citizen with Mr. McPherson, we have come together and because of this, and they are breaking this statue, we have decided to get together and we're doing a recall. We're going to be doing a recall. And I have all the forms and I have everything ready so that we can do a recall so that we can send this in to see if we can get a special election and see if we can get at least one of them out of that seat so that we can move forward with the business of the city of Pahokee. So after this meeting, meet me off the grounds of the city of Pahokee, whether it be in a parking lot or somewhere. But you can look for me, Pastor Wallace. I have all the forms. And we're going to get this done. We gotta get these signatures within 30 days from the first signature we get. And so that's what we're gonna be working on. So please, as a citizen, I'm concerned about what's going on in Pahokee. I'm one of the ones that asked the questions that all of them looked at me and didn't even respond. Wouldn't even answer me. Matter of fact, Juan told me, my attorney said for me not to talk to you. I'm a citizen. How you cannot talk to me? How can you not talk to me? I am a citizen. And you're telling me as an elected official, you can't talk to me? Well, how can you hold office then? So yes, we are gonna do a recall and we are going to need all of your support. And we're gonna also be doing registration drives if you're not registered to vote. Because guess what? Election time is coming up again. Thank you.
Good evening, people. Good evening. Robert Love from Pahokee. I don't really need no address. I ain't gonna even give you no address. Y'all know y'all got a fool on your hand, that audience. But I'm a fool for the Lord now. And what we gonna get in is some good trouble if y'all know what I'm talking about. Cause you know why? This man, Brandon Berg, I see him all on Keith Page. And he say Keith be playing the race card and all of that. Look like the race card been played tonight. If you ask me, where they at? Where is Perez? Where is Brandon Berg? Where is Gonzalez? Where is Bowlin? Where is that coup crew? That what you call the coup crew? See, they call theyself pull a coup here in Pahokee. And if y'all don't know what a coup is, a coup is when you take over government by any means necessary. Ain't nobody voted you in to do nothing. You see our commission? That's our commission. Last week, they had that little show, which I told y'all, I wasn't gonna come. They had that little protest. And listen to what I'm saying when I say it wasn't nothing but a protest. And y'all gonna understand when I say what I'm saying. I be on seven o'clock every day with people talking about Pahokee. We go all the way back to when it was, when they were putting the sewers down. That's how far we go back on Rodney Avenue. I remember when they put the sewers down. But when Brandon Berg can come to this town where he don't even come from, he ain't even from here. When Regina Bowlin can come to this town, who ain't even from here? Sarah Perez was raised in Beagley. I don't know where Gonzalez from. I hope I ain't too loud. But God gave me that voice to do this. I hope I ain't too loud. Them white folks always complaining about me being too loud in prison and everywhere. Cause I like people to know, I've been to jail, everywhere but here. God been had a hold on me though. That's why he made it to here. And just to show is I'm standing here today. When I seen them try to get rid of that woman that day, I come to the meeting, I hadn't been to a meeting in 15 years. And y'all know the last meeting I was to, me and the police had hell downtown. And then so who won? Me. Cause the police ass were gone. Excuse my language, y'all. Excuse me, language. Police were gone. So ain't no stranger. And what's going on in Pahokee? I wanna tell y'all, it's our fault. We ain't gonna play the blame game. We gonna start organizing, like I say, and strategizing. And then we got to mobilize. We got to come together. We can set up here in this meeting and then the next meeting, nobody gonna be thinking about nothing. Ain't nobody gonna be thinking about nothing. But like I said this morning, like I say on my lives every day, go back on my page and go back and look at something. Y'all to laugh yourself to death cause it's entertaining and educational. Ask Miss Big what be said now. She be on it. Ask Keith. Ask Miss Harden over there. Is it education? They be funny, they be laughing. I have them laughing. But it's not a laughing matter now. And like I said, when I said, we ain't worried about how many here. Cause like he said, when two or three gather in his name, he's in the mist. We ain't worried about that what's not here because we can understand now and people what's looking. Around the world can say, we see what that is. We see what that was. That was a coup. And if, we got some black people running around here part of that, wanna be part of it. Cause of friends. Like I said, Sarah no, me and her were friends. But when you set up there, ask Keith. Ask Miss Big. I went to commission meeting six years in a row and never missed a Tuesday for six years. Ask Keith about. Like he say, he been here 27 years. I couldn't wait to commission meet, to start something. I know where the line was. I never got put out of commission meeting. And like I be telling people on live, I'm gonna tell you right here in front of Keith about. I raised so much sand about a coup for us. Mazel tov come to the meeting and say, what he said Keith? I got this $250,000 check. They got the check this big. See, I got a $250,000 check to build a water park for them kids down there. And the only stipulation. He said, the only stipulation, if y'all don't know what the stipulation mean, it mean what y'all got to do. He say the only stipulation here, y'all got to name it after that man sitting right there, Robert Love. I'm sitting there, ask Miss Big, ask Keith, they on, they were commissioners. And I asked them what I did. I jumped up and say, no. Uh-uh. Y'all ain't gonna put my name up there cause I know what gonna happen. If it don't be some white folks tied up, it gonna be some black folks tied up cause Robert's name, Robert Love name up there. I know his people love me to death, but I also know his people hate me to death. See, I know, let me tell you something. Just to show that you know it's a God, you better know it's a devil. If you don't know it's a devil, you don't know it's a God. And like I tell people, God done blessed me so many times, I don't know he blessing me now. To bless you with some knowledge that we got to come together. We got to wake up. Like I say, we been in our comfort zone. We been in our comfort zone too long. We been laying on the couch with the remote. Damn what happened. Excuse my language. I ain't worried about what happened. I ain't worried about poker. We got people out there right now, standing on the corner drinking. They be saying, let them do what they wanna do. That what they doing? That's what they doing. They doing what they wanna do, people. And it's our kids that's letting them do it too. It's us that letting them do it too. So like I say, we can't play the blame game. Oh, what happened then? Oh, what happened now? It's what gonna happen now. It's what's gonna happen. That, that, that in the past, oh, that last. I can go over some mails and all of that, y'all. What we gonna do now, people? That man that been here 58 days outside over there witnessing. He told us more about Pahokee than some of us been here 58 years. No. That what we got to understand, people. We got to stand for something. Or we gonna fall for anything. And the only way we gonna do that, stand for something, is get out of our comfort zone. People, we too comfortable. You get your little loan, you get to this and get to that. Everybody getting some money now. You should've been back there when we had the pick beans. Not we, cause I tell people. What we fighting for is our ancestors. Our ancestors. I tell people this. Them, excuse my, cause I ain't the president either. But I see the white ones, hell, they left. Here were two sitting over there, they left. So we got to understand, it's not a racist thing. When I sent the sisters out, it was 62% population black in Pahokee. 24% Hispanic. They got 14% here. They ain't got no business talking about they taking over nothing. Cause what I was about to say, our people, my grandmama, your grandmama, your great-grandmama's, they was here working in that cane, corn, beans, celery. They was doing that. Them white folks were raising cane, raising bean, raising corn. You know what our people were doing? Working and raising kids. Working and raising kids. And our people, finishing up. Our people have raised some kids like this, like a Keith Baal, like a Ms. Mervin. That's what I'm talking about our people did for this land. Our people prayed for this land. And they ain't gonna let it go. Nobody ain't gonna tell me. I'm gonna be on live every day, seven o'clock. I'm gonna come on live. And here what we got to say, cause we got a lot invested in Pahokee. And know what it is? It's my grandmama. My grandmama died in 93, worked in the fields all her life. And you think y'all gonna come take Pahokee and ain't never been here? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Loves. I just wanna make a quick announcement. I don't wanna panic anyone. But several folks in here are receiving texts saying that it's a possibility there may be some shooting because we are in this place. I don't wanna downplay this, but because of that threat and the possibility of it possibly could occur, I'm gonna have to dismiss this proceeding. I currently had a state of emergency. It aspired today. I'm planning on re-initiating it for another seven days. But if somebody just absolutely have to make a quick come in, it's fine. But I just wanna let you know so we can go ahead and dismiss it. But I'm gonna let those who need to speak quickly be able to do that.
Mayor, those who don't feel comfortable, please allow them to leave. Although Esso has assured me that they are here. Although Esso has assured me that they are here, and, and that's their job to protect us, but bullets don't know nobody. So I can hold what I have, but I can tell you all that we are fighting not for us, not for what they will make you think that this meeting is all about race, is all about protecting employment, it's about breaking the law. And that's what it's about. It's about when you are elected and you don't hold your place and you break the law. And yes, I'm part of the ones who have filed a petition, and we are in court, and we are seeking the help of all the citizens of Pohokee. So please, just come together, help us fight, sign the petition, sign the, the, the recall and help us. You can reach me at 561-261-6220. Mayor?
Thank you.
I'm not running. I ain't, I done ran my last run, y'all.
Carl Morrison, Sr., 25, 87th Southwest, 14th Terrace. Personally, I fear no man. Every man put their pants on exactly like me, one leg at a time. And if he happen to jump in them, I step back, scratch my head, and figure that out also. Now, let me get to business right here. We have people on the commission throwing rocks like they so holy then die. I've been coming to these meetings for years. When I come, I always come with documentation to the news media. Before y'all leave, I wanna get with you all, give you some homework to do. Every one of them have had charges on them. That's not slander, that's documentation I have. So for them to be saying what they're saying, even some of the citizens that go on their book of, of faith, okay, to each one of those citizens that go on their book of faces, a lot of them, I have documentation on them with their wrongdoings. For an example, Mr. Miller, he a part of the problem that's forced on the marina where it is waste. I did my homework, even when he was in Jersey, he got charged for doing the same thing. So wherever he go, he leave his behind, okay? Documentation be conversation any day of the week, point blank. I deal with facts, and we will stand. We will stand, we will stand. Thank you.
Mayor, let me say, say one thing. Because of what we are doing, some of us have had our jobs jeopardized, with threats have been made, and not in a way that we can go back and, and, and document it, but people are calling in on people's jobs, trying to get them fired just for standing up for justice. That, that's not cool. Getting on Facebook and slandering people's names just because you got a freedom of speech? Be careful. Don't follow everything you hear on Facebook. I, I promise you, they don't know what they talking about. And don't be a part of the problem if you don't have a solution.
If, if all do possible, we need to have these citizens meet at least once or two, or one, once a month. 'Cause I think this is moving forward right here. We, we, we gotta speak as citizens. So don't let this be the last meeting. We gotta come together and have these meetings where we can speak out. Like I say, uh, I got so much hostility toward these meetings, I don't, I don't wanna say nothing, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, but respect everybody coming out, we need to have these meetings at least once a month.
That's right, wake people up, people need to wake up. I bet you people out there resting now saying they should've came.
Again, just, anyone else wish to speak right quickly? If not, I wish you be safe out there, and God bless. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.